Council at CI dot Bremerton. Zoom recordings of study sessions will also be available online in a few days following the meeting. Any of the items approved for action by council tonight will be placed on the March fifth. Twenty twenty five city council meeting agenda or as otherwise determined. For council, we start with our item A. I'd like to invite Mayor Wheeler to the table. Make an announcement. Go ahead.
All right. I, you know, I was wondering why they were down here. What's been happening? Yeah. So thank you, council, for your time. I just wanted to inform you I am moving forward with extending an offer. To our candidate for the DEI position. That's good news.
Thank you.
We're doing our due diligence, researching the legal landscape. Now have some more information to base decisions on. And we, um, we're comfortable now moving forward and excited to be doing so.
Can we ask, like, what changed or?
That's, I don't mind, but I, I just kind of like put them on the, because it's exciting. Then we have a whole agenda, but I'm not going to stop. You guys want to make first impressions.
It's, it's exciting and it's a nice surprise and I just.
You know, outside consulting. To help, to help us, you know, analyze what we're trying to do. And analyze what we have been doing and if it's consistent, yeah, it is. It's consistent with all legal practices that are allowed. And so, um, the words DEI, it's been, um, determined by a judge. That's, you know, that kind of, kind of froze free speech, put a, had a chilling effect on people. Need to use those words in their daily operations. And frankly, it kind of stifled things. And so the judge, um, came out with that determination. Um, and many DEI practices are legal. So it'll be, we will have to work closely, the position will work closely with our legal department. To make sure we maintain a, a legal status and, which we will, as always, we've always done it. And so, but just having a little bit more clarity, understanding of the order. And, um, yeah, reviewing our practices, so.
Those statements going to go out or some, or your, yeah.
Yeah.
Good, great.
Yep. We'll get a quick statement out and we'll get the offer extended. And I'm excited to introduce you.
Thank you for letting us know before.
I know the committee was.
Yes, we were very happy with this choice. Um, you're gonna love her. And also thank you so much to our legal department and the mayor who, um, like, you know. You, you were, you really have stood by your word that you, that you made to the candidate. That this is important to work and that you tend to follow through. And, um, that means a lot. So, thank you.
Yeah, hopefully after this chaos, we can get moving on and it'll be excellent.
Yes.
Well, yeah. Chaos brought on by the federal administration, right? Thank you.
That to stop. We'll be, we'll be looking at the executive orders and, um, monitoring closely. We're comfortable moving forward.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. All right, now we'll get, uh, back to the agenda. Item A, one is information only presentation. Mr. Davis is going to present an overview of the twenty twenty four wastewater comprehensive plan update.
This is a high one if you wanted to.
If I sit in alone, like. Good evening, Bremerton City Council.
Good evening.
I'm here to give you an update on our wastewater comprehensive plan. This is something that, uh, City Bremerton Engineering, our operations staff, as well as our consultant, have been working on for the past sixteen to seventeen months. To, uh, update our plan that was last updated in two thousand fourteen. So I hope to provide you an overview of the plan, uh, as well as hit some of the highlights and then talk a little bit about the public. The public commentary doesn't stop. Now with my first slide right there.
It looks remarkably like Jane.
Okay, so. The state of Washington through WAC one seventy three to forty fifty requires that agencies, um, up, they prepare and update a general sewer plan. Um, we update our plan every ten years. The last update to our plan was in two thousand fourteen. So this is a comprehensive plan of the entire system, which is the system as well as for the past. Twenty years growth, um, twenty years down the line. That's the planning period, this, this plan. It includes improvements and programs. Growth and replacement and rehabilitation of the system to ensure that we're providing excellent services. And also that it's financially viable too. So Kennedy Jenks was the consultant that we selected to perform this work. They're a national firm. They have a office in Tacoma Fed away and, um, the project manager at the time had seventeen years experience working in a wastewater treatment plant. Which really appealed to us, bringing his operational knowledge to, um, consulting background. So that's why we ended up selecting him to be the consultant. And they're also working on several other contracts with us. Um, and the scope also included, in addition to the update. Evaluations of the Puget Sound Industrial Center, sewer in that area, as well as the evaluation of the crosstown pipeline, our most critical pipelines in Bremerton. So this plan has to be approved, um, reviewed and approved by Department of Ecology. I sent it to Ecology a couple of days ago electronically. We received the plan from my consultant on February eighteenth. And it was just sent to Ecology so they can start the review. It could take up two, four months. And there'll probably be some back and forth as we figure out, um, how to get this approved. And once it's approved, we presented to City Council for adoption by ordinance. Um, the last time it was adopted was in December of twenty fourteen. So next, so just some key sections of the plan. Uh, section two is regulatory and compliance requirements. It talks about the Federal Clean Water Act as well as the National Plutant Discharge Elimination. Uh, system permit that regulates wastewater, um, from our treatment plant. Ecology, um, they're the ones who prepare the permit and we have to comply with that permit. And then chap, section three talks about the existing service area and describes the system in detail. I refer to this particular section quite a bit, just for the background. And then section four is something that's new that Kennedy Jenks introduced to us. It's the risk analysis and vulnerability assessment of our entire system. All the key components of our system. And then there's a consequence of failure evaluation for each of those components. An example being the Port Washington neuro cycles that cross from East Bremerton to West Bremerton. What happens if those fail? You know, the environmental consequence, how it would appear to the public, um, you know, the operational knowledge that we have to deal with that type of failure. So looked at each component of our system, um, and then ranked, right, looked at the consequence of failure and ranked it. And then the, um, the next three sections deal with determining future flows and loads in our system based on population projections. Uh, that was section five, section six, six of five that information to our collection system. And looked at, you know, hydraulic evaluation of our collection system over the next twenty years. Look at areas where we might need capacity improvements. And then section seven, you know, hydraulic evaluation as well as, um, process evaluation to look at. Um, problematic areas in our treatment plan over the next twenty years. So all that information fed into the development of our capital improvement plan in section eight. Uh, which is the list of projects describing them, the costs and when they're going to be implemented. And then the second half of chapter eight is the fiscal impact, looking at the viability of our, um, current wastewater utility. And then what's going to be like in twenty years as we deliver all these projects and programs. Chapter nine is the operate, operations and maintenance, basically giving background and utility, looking at, um, how that utility looks within the overall framework. The public works in utility department and how it's staffed, um, things that we need to do to improve staffing over the next twenty years to, um, meet our maintenance needs. And then just some key appendices, there's basin plants from twenty fifteen that contain a lot of excellent information, including planning information for, um, UGAs. And, um, new service areas that is still relevant today. There's interagency agreements, because we have agreements with the Navy and Kitzup County for, um, providing sewer service. The modeling results are there. And then the memorandums for the crosstown pipeline, the P six sewer. That I'll be discussing later. So this project, um, started back in September of twenty twenty three and, um, jumped right in with some workshops. We had seven workshops with operations and engineering staff to do that, um, BRVA assessment. And then out of that and based on site visits, visits and, um, information that was gathered by our consultant, they started to develop the plan. We started to receive and, and did the modeling and we received the drafts pretty late in the year. In October and then they started to continue to come in and we've been working closely with them and our operations staff, having a really, um, having our entire staff. Engineering and operations staff that are wastewater related, review these plans, um, these documents to get to the point where they delivered them to us on February eighteen. So we had electronic, we had a, he actually showed up, uh, people flew in from Washington DC, Denver and Montana to deliver these documents to us. So.
Did they have their own seat?
On the, on the plane. It was good to finally meet them because we had been working and they were here just training too. So over the next few months, um, what you'll see is the public commentary, which starts tomorrow for the next thirty days. And then the ecology, Ecology is reviewing the draft right now. There's a SEPA review. And then we'll, we'll work with Ecology to finalize the plan and then present to the city council later in the year. So I just wanted to highlight some of the key projects that came out of the capital improvement plan development. The Oyster Bay sewer, little oyster bay sewer basin upgrades is a continuation of the project that, you know, I talked about a few years ago. Taking beach sewers out of commission and then installing up in the sewer system. So this is a continuation of that project. Going north in Ostrich Bay. So you're going to hear more about that, those projects because they're so imminent in the next, um, two or three years. Uh, wastewater treatment plant alcohol improvements. This was identified during, um, hydraulic and process modeling of our treatment plant. If these improvements are not made. Um, it's going to affect upstream processes at the treatment plant. We're already seeing hydraulic issues with lids lifting at the treatment plant. Due to hydraulic pressure, so we need to upgrade our waste. And alcohol in the next, um, fifteen years. And then the crosstown pipeline redundancy, that's a significant project to, uh, provide some redundancy for our sewer. Our primary sewer truck through the city. And that, I note that is branch funded. And then, um, and I'll be talking more about that project. The newer iteration basins and grid system upgrades project, you'll see the price tag there, almost seventy million dollars. That was identified also during the process evaluation that was done. That we are at capacity right now with our iteration basins and any growth, increase in capacity at the treatment plant with any growth that goes on. Our system that we will, we will soon be out of compliance. So we need to plan for that project. And then the last one is a P six sewer, which I'll be talking about. Um, I just wanted to cover real quickly the chapter eight CIP and fiscal impact chapter. Um, this, this is, um, it's really part one and part two in this chapter. Part one is talking about the capital improvement plan, the projects that we're going to be doing. That we identified and how we're going to be delivering them over the next twenty years, the costs, the description of them and how they're going to be funded. So that's all in that chapter. And then the second half is looking at the viability of, of the wastewater utility. And, uh, you know, the current viability and then future to fund all these projects. So that second half has the financial plan and you'll see the costs. In, in that document, you'll see the cost that four hundred and thirty million dollars of expenditure is, um, been estimated over, over the next twenty years. To meet our, um, programming needs. And that said, escalated at four percent annually. That's why it seems so large. Without the escalation, it's about two hundred and seventy million dollars. So, but that's programmed over twenty years and that's all outlined in that section. The funding occurs through combination of customer rates, facility charges, low cost loans, grants, private funding and also bonding too. And we've identified rate increases of three point five percent through twenty twenty nine and increasing to eight point four percent. From twenty thirty to twenty four, or through twenty thirty four. So there's a few things I want to mention that I had. There's a lot of jargon in that chapter, but some of the things that I caught were that, the, I'm wondering about the wastewater rates. Um, the EPA, they develop an affordability index, a benchmark for rates. And they base it on, they look at the median income, median income of an area. And then they say that the rate should not exceed two point five percent of that median income. So if there's an income of say a hundred thousand dollars, that's the average income. The wastewater rate for that, you know, should not be more than two point five, it should be two point five hundred dollars. That's about two hundred bucks a month, right? Um, so in our, they determine that our rate in twenty thirty four is one point four three percent. So it's significantly lower than what the EPA considers, uh. The, the PA considers acceptable. So those numbers, those rate increases look high, but, um, they're within, they're actually.
And I was just using City Bremerton for the median income or is it like a county? How, do you know the area? Okay. I don't know. Just curious.
Yeah.
I'm always curious about that.
It's different if it's county.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, I can, I can clarify that. Cause I'll be, I'll be talking about this next Wednesday and I can get to that question with you.
Thank you so much.
And, uh, when you read that section, you get over and over that we're a very financially viable utility. It's stable. We have the capacity for taking our new debt if necessary for capital projects. And the wastewater fund generates sufficient revenue to meet all of the O and M and capital costs. And then, um. Yeah, that's, that's the summary that you get from reading that chapter. So, okay, P six sewer feasibility, we, as part of the scope of Kennedy Jenks, we asked them to, um, do a couple of evaluations. One of them was about searing the area, known as the Puget Sound Industrial Center and, um, South Kitsap. South part of Kitsap County there, Bremerton extends all the way out to, um, just to south even of, uh, Lake Floor Road. And that area out there is called P six and it's been, um. Uh, yeah, classified to be an industrial area. And they predict that there could be employment up to ten thousand people in twenty forty four. So we asked them to look at three alternatives for searing that area because currently the only treatment is at the port of Bremerton. Have a, a small system out there to, to support that area. So, um, the three alternatives, alternative one and two were, were similar. We looked at, alternative one looked at Mason County supporting us to provide sewage treatment for up to a hundred sixty thousand gallons per day. That's all dependent on us having some kind of agreement with Mason County, which Mason County was just still not determined yet. And then we would, um, we would add basin and pump stations over time at a treatment facility up near the port. So we could provide treatment in that area. Alternative two assumes that we don't get that deal done with Basin County. So things happen quicker. We have to have stations and treatment. So it doesn't really allow some phasing option. And alternative three is, um, it, it assumes we do get some support from Mason County. And then put in, in bands, pumping station, pumping stations enforcement all the way to Bremerton. So the, our operations staff really liked that alternative because there's no new treatment plant and just the, the issues associated with, um. Maintaining a new treatment plant. And it was also the least expensive option too. So, so these are, this is a real high level evaluation before any decisions were made, um, for studies would have to be done. Um, and that's a techno moan appendix H. And the next study that we did was, um, the crosstown pipeline redundancy. The crosstown pipeline is the most, um. Is the most, uh, uh, is the most critical pipeline in Bremerton. It gets all the flow from East Bremerton. Uh, most of the flow from West Bremerton, including Navy Base, the Navy Base, all the flow goes into that pipe. So it's various, it's a very critical pipeline. Um, it was constructed back in the nineteen eighties. And currently there's no way to take it offline if we had to maintain it. There's no simple way to take it out of service, maintain or evaluate it. So, um, we asked, we asked KJ to look at some alternatives to evaluate, providing redundancy so that we can take it out of service. The alternatives including a, included a parallel full side, full size pipeline that we could take off at any time of the year. Um, alternative, second alternative one D with a half size pipeline that allows to take it off, uh, service during dry weather. And then the third one was using, um, stations and typing to kind of pump it through Navy Yard City to the treatment plant. And our preferred alternatives was providing a parallel pipeline so that, um, we could take it out of service when we would like. Though that was the most expensive option. So it just provided us the most flexibility. So, um, other items I just wanted to quickly address was the public comment period starting February twenty seventh, um, the public, this has been, um. Pushed out on social media, um, the mayor talked about it. He, um, was talking about a planning commission. Um, it's on the city website. So there's, uh, the public works, it's on the public works part of the website. I'll look into that. So it should be. And so there's, there's, it has been, attempt has been made to push this out. Oh, okay. Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
In the last five minutes?
Yeah.
Okay.
And it goes, goes live tomorrow.
It's for real time.
So, so there will be opportunity for the public to view it, individual sections and comment through a form or email to me. Uh, I wanted to mention that we, the city's never had a sewer model. We've had a water model for years. Um, but we've never had a hydraulic model of our sewer system as part of this update, or just a hydraulic model. It's the same model that our consultant's using. So we'll have a chance to, um, update our sewer system and evaluate it in real time. Uh, as developers come in and look at the impact of additional flows versus your system. And then I wanted to mention the Puget Sound Nutrient General Permit, uh, which came into, uh, that was effective January first, twenty twenty two. Uh, there was a time where we didn't know, because of some legal unknowns where we didn't know the future of that permit. Um, I think it's passed both those legal permits, but, um, there's still a lot of uncertainties about that permit and the financial impact of the city. None of the costs associated with that permit are included as part of the CIP. Um, you know, HDR did a report for several years ago where they estimated up to two hundred million dollars improvements would be required over twenty year period. None of that's included in this part of the CIP, just because of the uncertainties. But we continue to, um, send our report into Ecology every March. Just to, in order to, um, comply with that permit. And then I just wanted to quickly mention the uncertainty about the funding sources for the crosstown pipeline at P six. We're hoping that the crosstown pipeline funding can be grant funded because it's such a significant, um, pipeline. You received seven point two million dollars recently for another pipeline through the Navy. Um, it's, it was a very significant pipeline to them. We're hoping that they would also see this as a significant pipeline. Um, and contribute to that. And then P six, we anticipate would be developer funded. It's, um, we looked at all the, it's, it's very expensive. So if development occurs, that would be funded. So that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Bill. We'll open up for questions and, and Jane, um, I'm not sure I'm going to be able to see you. So just pipe in if you have any questions.
Nice, man.
Feel, okay, feel free to, uh, to talk.
Okay, sound quality is really poor.
Oh.
I could hear, I could hear Bill, but I'm having a hard time hearing anybody else.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I tell you what, I think it, if, as far as hearing me, how about now? Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, I can hear you okay.
Okay, uh, Jeff.
Okay, thanks, Bill. Excellent summary, much appreciated. So if we're looking at rate increase of three point five percent through twenty twenty nine and eight point four percent after that to twenty thirty four. Do we have any rough estimate how much bigger it would be if the nutrient general permit comes to. Kind of like the worst case scenario where the city has to saddle the full cost in the, the state legislation or ruling, I should say.
I think anything I say would be, um, very qualitative at this point. And, um, you know, mind you. We would hope that there would be federal funding available, um, because it's so significant. For the, for local, local agencies to have money available too.
Okay. Significant costs will leave it there.
Anyone else? Anna?
I.
Jane.
Jane, go ahead. I heard a Jane.
Heard a Jane.
So, uh, Bill, is there any or anybody there? Is there any sense instead of having this. Huge eight point four percent increase to, instead of having three point five for the next five years. To make it like three point eight or four percent, which would definitely lower the impact of. Jumping all the way up to an eight point five percent. Has that been looked at? It could be considered.
Yeah, so, yeah, so this model is done by our consultants, uh, with the data we have now, we'll start playing, but we're trying to smooth out the rate. So as we develop modeling, each budget now having to your budget, we will play with that scenario, see what that could do in the out years. Um, and, and talking with engineering, how, how will these projects all run those out years? The closer we get to those dates, we can see close from the CIP, are they going to materialize? Right now, this is conjecture on where those fall, um, with projection and then we're pretty, you know, pretty far away from twenty thirty. Um, to, you know, know that's going to be actually what's likely in those years, we do a six year lookout. When those come in the six years, we'll be trying to smooth those out. So we're here for that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Anna?
Thanks. Um, so on page eight of this, uh, Bill, is the key capital projects over the next twenty years. The anticipated funding for one, two, three and a half of them is long. Is that from the Public Works Assistance Account?
It's, it, most likely it would be, uh, Ecology CW SRF.
Okay.
Um, there's also Public Works Board too. We don't, you don't see those out as much. I, I imagine it would mainly be SRF.
Okay, I'm asking because people did not, it, it seemed quite likely that that'll be cannibalized this year. So, um, my second of three questions is on the PSIC sewer feasibility. And I'm looking at you, Ned, because you are the prime mover. Um, don't we have an ILA for, with Mason County for a sewage treatment plant? Or for sewage exchange at, so to speak?
We have an ILA to work on an ILA. That's what we have.
Not even know those exist.
That's how challenging it's going to be.
Like, there's no ILA that, um, commits Mason County to provide sewer service to Bremerton right now. We've been trying to get them to move on that for like two years. Um, I'm hoping that while I'm on vacation next week, we actually get a draft of that ILA for Bill to start looking at. Um, so we, and they've been. Uh, chewing on that for quite a while and trying to decide, uh, if they're going to provide sewer service to Bremerton. So it's a yes or no. Um, if we get, uh, confirmed yes, then the next thing we would, on an ILA, we. Get it through the process to bring to council for approval. And then, uh, there's also a three million dollar grant through Commerce that city has been awarded. But we haven't executed on because we don't have a commitment for service from Mason County. So, um, assuming that Mason County, uh, that we can all figure out this ILA language and get something to council in a manner. Then we would be trying to get that, uh, Commerce Grant approved and executed before June thirtieth. Um, it becomes less certain if it happens after June thirtieth of this year with the budget. Um, so that's where we are. And, yeah, we're, we're really waiting for a response from Mason County right now. That's where we are. And then one other comment I'd make about P six is, um, Bill said it's planned for private funding. That is true. All of the planning has been done to date that like it was private development funded, right? But this three million dollars isn't private development funding. It's coming through appropriation from the legislature. And we might get some construction funding that could be an appropriation to the legislature. We might be able to convince the Navy that there's a, a federal grant that would be good for this area that would. Um, potentially be a funding source to provide improvements. It is a problem to develop the Puget Sound Industrial Center, assuming that all of the money's going to come in as private. Because, um, nobody wants to be the first person to have to pay the big bill. So, uh, Jane asked this question to Public Works Committee, I think. And my answer was, um, right now, that's how it's laid out in the plan. It's the snapshot in time crystal ball. Um, there may, maybe a council policy decision later to decide if. Council wants to fund improvements because really it's an economic development in the area, right? Which is what it's supposed to be. So, right now Bill's right, that's what it says, but that might change and evolve over time. So if you really want something to happen more, somebody's going to have to step up and figure out how they get skin in the game to fund it.
Okay, thank you. Cause the port has sewage lagoons, is that correct?
Yep.
And Amazon has sewage lagoons?
Amazon is, everything goes to the port's lagoons. All of the sewer treatment and collection system goes to the port system right now. Cause we don't own and don't maintain.
Yeah, and, and the Kitsap Transit Driver Training Facility, which will be opening soon, um, in their plans, they have their own. Um, little sewage lagoon.
I don't know, I haven't seen that.
Okay.
I, I don't know what they're, I know that there's something planned, but I don't know how they're going to provide sewer service.
That, that was the plan they presented. That, that was the plan they presented. Kitsap Transit Port.
Okay, and then final question, which is, I have followed the link in this presentation. And there is nowhere to actually find the comprehensive wastewater plan. Like, it's not on the page that says wastewater plan update.
I know what you were just talking about, Mayor, that that's some work to get updated right now.
But if you, it's the very top, there should be a box right there.
Yep. Click here for details and nothing happens. I mean, things happen, but they don't.
Oh, you are no good. Sorry.
That's it right there.
Yeah, but.
Oh, they're not live. It'll be live.
There you go. Okay, that was my question. And attached to that is, who's going to analyze those comments? Kennedy Jenks?
It'll be a combination. It'll all be the first filters and then we'll figure out, who needs to respond to them, whether it's operations staff or Kennedy Jenks.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All right, Bill, we'll see you next week when you present to the public. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, before you leave, would you mind switching chairs so the mayor has a little taller chair? Thank you. All right, so speaking of the mayor, we're going to welcome him for items B one through B five. First one, item B one is to confirm appointment of Ms. Anna Doring to the Planning Commission. Mayor?
And I'm going to help with the ones that are for the Commission on Salary.
Okay.
This is Quinn Dennehy, guys.
I know exactly.
So you got a Planning Commission appointee, Mayor?
Yes, Anna Doring. So she was, goes to the top, and we have her application in front of you. And I'm pleased to present her for your approval.
Okay, impressions from the council. Anna?
I'm sorry. I, I think this person is really well qualified. And I thought that when she was up in front of the tree committee as well. I, I believe this is the same person, but her qualifications as a real estate broker, logistic supply chain management, military volunteer, military sexual assault advocacy, and a lot of experience in procurement. I, I don't understand. And, yeah, thank you so much for like seeking to fill the vacancies on the planning commission. But I don't understand how this prepares this candidate to be a good member of the planning commission. And, and I'm, I'm not saying I can see that she isn't. I just really don't get it.
Yeah, well, you know, some of the most important criteria we look for is, is the person willing to work with others in a, in a board setting and embrace other ideas and learn and want to do that. And be willing to collaborate and be part of a cohesive unit. They don't have to disagree on everything, obviously. And the thing I said says you don't have to agree on everything. It's, it's giving that floor space and being willing and being willing to take on a new idea. As far as her professional backgrounds, what, what it does show is a professional background. This is somebody who's had to be in field, in these areas that she's identified. These are professional fields. There are areas that she has dedicated her life to. And so we, not that it's a, not that it's necessary to dedicate your life to a profession. But it does show an individual who's used to showing up, being on time, contributing. Being a member or part of a, part of a team, getting things done. So it could have been any one of a number of backgrounds, but this has a background that shows this is a person who's been out in the community doing a lot of good.
Okay, since I am in the minority, I'm going to stop talking now. I, I had really hoped that the many, one of the many reported applications from the street smart people might have appeared before us. So, but being in the minority, sometimes you just shut up, and I'm doing that now.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, how do we want to treat this item? Consent it is. Next item is the
It was well behaved. Did not touch the electric.
So it just makes the table cleaner.
It's just, it pisses off all the
Yeah.
Whatever.
Okay. All right. Okay, next item is the, confirm the appointment of Mr. Daniel Cole to the Bremerton Kitsap Access Television Citizens Advisory Committee.
Yes, so, and I have Colleen behind me, and she played a big part of this. And Colleen, if you'd like to join me. You can have that seat.
I was hoping for the low one.
So, and so Daniel does come highly recommended. He really did well in the personal interview. And, yeah, Colleen, do you want to add anything?
Yeah, I, I interviewed him on the phone, and then I had a in-person interview with him. And he's not participated in any committees or commissions previously. But he really wants to get involved and wants to have his voice heard. And so, you know, really, this position's been open for a very long time and a couple of years. And he seems enthusiastic and for the main purposes of the committee to provide outreach and to spread awareness about BCAT in the community. I think he's going to be great at that.
Okay, questions or concerns from the council? Jennifer?
I, I just want to know how being an Eagle Scout is going to prepare him for this. I'm just kidding. I just want to call that out. He's an Eagle Scout.
I think it prepares you for just about anything.
Pretty much. No, 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 that was, I just felt like I needed to call that out.
Thank you.
Right?
Oh, Jane.
I got a question. I think this sounds great. I'm wondering, why did it take so long to, to find somebody suitable to be on the board? Is there just no interest or the community didn't know there was an opening or?
We do a lot of promotion for this particular opening. But our advisory committee is filled by people from all different jurisdictions all throughout Kitsap County, including the island and Palbo. And we get a lot of applicants for this position who aren't qualified because they don't live within the city limits. So, you know, that's, that's the main thing that has, you know, we get applications, but we don't have openings. Or they don't fit for the particular opening.
Okay, well, I'm glad we're filling one from a city of Bremerton residents. Thank you.
How do we want to treat this item?
Consent.
Consent.
Consent it is. Next item is to kind of firm the reappointment of Ms. Kirsty Hartle to the Citizens Commission on Council Salaries.
So I'm going to take these three first, just because this one is a little bit different than some of our other committees. This is a committee that's in our charter. And I'm going to give you an overview of these three positions because you'll see that, that we've got a reappointment that is for a term beginning April sixth. And then we have two additional appointments, and they are for less time. And the reason is that we're trying to get back into a staggered three-year term in conformance with our charter. We got out of sync there for a while. And so we're going to be keeping a closer eye on that in the future. But that's why you have three applicants, three different terms. And this first one that we're looking at is a, a reappointment. This person has already served, and this will be their last one, because the charter says that they can't serve again. So there, but we won't be looking to fill this one until I think it was twenty seventh, yeah, or twenty, twenty seventh. Yeah, and so
The limit?
Right, so that's going to be the end of theirs. And then, so this will be her second, this is for her second term. Yeah. Okay. And then, so like I said, this is a reappointment. I, I did not do any additional vetting on this person. Or no one else in my office did. They, they've served before. I don't think that there was any problems. And this is a committee that HR helps with. And so that's why it kind of comes to us. We don't get a lot of interest in this committee. A lot of people are not interested. And so I'm glad that we have three people and they have some work to do. The charter requires that they have two meetings before July. When, and so this one is one that we had some urgency to get to you and get appointed. So this is the person who's a reappointment. If you want, I can just go through all three of them. And then, I'm sorry, I have it on here, but yours, it's easier to, you have it, so it's a nice large screen.
So the next one for the record is Quinn Dennehy.
That's correct.
We're still looking at Kirsten, oh, Kirsty Hartle?
Yeah, so I was just going to go through like all three of them, but we can, yeah. Just so you can see that the term is different. So if you look at the bottom, Quinn's term ends in twenty twenty-six. And then if you look at the next person on there, John Brennan, his term in would end at the end of this year, twenty twenty-five. And so the difference, even though they're all getting appointed by council in one swoop, they're different lengths of terms, and that's to get us back in that stagger. And, and we talked to them about that, and they were all. But yeah, I, you want to go back up to the reappointment?
I do.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I, I was fascinated by how much experience she has in planning. She works as a planner. And, and on her initial list, she didn't even have this, this commission. But when she first applied in twenty twenty-one. Yeah, she's looking, she has a desire to find approaches to address community needs and responsible growth. Yeah, she seems really well qualified for, for planning. And yet she wishes to go back into this committee, eh?
My understanding, yeah.
Okay.
All right, so any other, we'll just go on by one if we're
Okay, yeah.
Any other questions or comments on Mr. Hartle? Do we want to treat this item?
Consent.
Consent.
So then, since we've had the, the introduction for all three, now we're going to talk about Mr. Dennehy.
Sure.
If you want.
One of the reasons that I, I thought this would be a good candidate for this commission is that it is setting salaries were a position that a lot of people think they know what council members do. But they might not really understand what it's about. And also like the time commitment. And then I guess what I would like to say, probably like opportunity cost. It impacts relationships. I don't know, I'm speaking to the choir here, if you guys live it, but I thought it would be helpful to have someone who had sort of recently offered their perspective to their fellow commission members. And so
Yeah.
To the mayor about it and
Thank you.
Agreed that
He voiced quite often.
And he, he did not re-up. Yeah, which is, you know, a you know, I, I, I don't think that this is something where he's going to be trying to get back into it or something like that. And set his salary high.
Helped the job.
He did his service, and he was ready to move on to the next adventure.
He has a perspective that he can offer for this. So that was the reason for Mr. Dennehy's appointment?
Questions or comments about Mr. Dennehy's advocacy?
I don't know.
Well, and I just want to make sure because we, there, I mean, there are rules for hiring people who have been on City Council. But it's not the same for commissions and
Volunteering.
Volunteer, okay.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think that there was, I, I read through it. There's, for council commission and salary, the charter actually says who can and can't be on it. And it doesn't say anything about former.
Like, just for transparency, that would be good to ask. I don't think he's a great candidate.
Yeah. Consent.
Consent.
John Brennan is the next one. And so I can, I, I know John from the Bar Association. He's a local lawyer. He is a renter in the Minette area.
But, I'm sorry, my face just goes without me.
It does. So Mr. Brennan worked in Valletta Municipal Court for a long time as a public defender. He's not doing that type of work right now, except for the city, but is for Bainbridge Island. He also has practiced it deals with landlord tenant issues. And so he has not been involved in any city committee before. He's been a resident for a long time. He is very active in Minette culture and what else to describe it.
Josh Farley is
Yeah, yeah, Josh Farley and James Doctor, his references. They both had very nice things to say about him. He's a regular at the Minette trivia. Is familiar with that. He's quite good at trivia. But this is going to be a very short appointment because of the timing. Hope that he sticks with it and wants to, maybe, I don't want to call this a gateway committee, but, you know, get him involved. Nice guy. I think public defenders are great in group settings because they're really used to working with all types, all lots of people, because they often have their client who's some of our most vulnerable. And then you're often talking to a judge or a council and all that. And so they're just really great at collaborating. And I think he'll be great for this.
Okay, questions or comments?
Consent.
I'm hearing consent. Okay. Thank you, Kylie. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for the very full presentation.
Okay.
Two out of three will be lawyers?
There will be, but you know what? I actually thought of it. They don't know each other. They don't, for, I, I ironically enough, so, you know, Quinn's practice is in Seattle and it's
No, I didn't mean because there's conflict. I just assumed the meetings would become longer.
I, you know, it could. I can't say that they won't, but, you know, we'll do our best. Some in line.
All right.
But they are very different types of lawyers.
Yeah, 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 I get that.
So getting back on the agenda.
I'm so sorry.
No worries.
Thank you.
I'd like to welcome Internal Services Manager, Matt Donlach, here to present item B six, the Interlocal Purchasing System, otherwise known as TIPS. Agreement with Region Eight Education Center. Mr. Donlach, go ahead. You have the floor.
Thank you. Good evening. So I'm here to present the interlocal agreement with Region Eight Education Services Center. They are based out of Pittsburgh, Texas. This ILA gives us access to TIPS, the Interlocal Purchasing System. This is a national co-op purchasing program. Melinda Monroe, our Contract Minister, she verified that Region Eight's RFP process. Their vetting of how they, their contractor, how they, the competitive bid process, the way they bet their vendors and their contractors, and then their award process all aligns with our RCWs. So it makes it a good fit for us to join this. We do have other ILAs that we use that are out of state. I just wanted to talk about a couple of those. That's Arizona State Purchasing Co-op. We use that for police vehicles. Prince William County Public Schools, which is based out of Tennessee. We use that for our fire and security competence testing. And then Sourceball, which is based out of Minnesota. We buy vehicles from them and parts of vehicles. So it's not uncommon for us to have ILAs with out-of-state agency. So I just wanted to touch on that. The reason I, I am presenting this is because the project that I am working on will utilize this TIPS agreement. It's prep and painting of the white cough wall underpats in preparation for the Charleston Business District's art mural. It'll be installed later this year. A local contractor in Silverdale is a member of TIPS, so we'll be using them. We did get another proposal from a local painter we use just to verify that the pricing is competitive. And we found that the TIPS pricing was about five thousand dollars less than the other painting contractors. So it felt like it was a good fit and a good value. So I'm available if you have any questions.
Open up for questions.
Came through Public Safety and or, or Public Works.
Public Safety.
Yeah, 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 yeah. And I was, I was impressed with the fact that we could use local vendors. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, no.
Okay, great. Jeff?
Nothing in here that excludes us from purchasing from somebody else. We find a better deal or
Absolutely not. No, it just gives us the option to use it.
Excellent.
No other questions or concerns? How do we treat this item? Thank you. Welcome back our city attorney, Ellie Fennell, to present item B seven, the ordinance amendment, BMC Chapter. Well, welcome back our city attorney, Ellie Fennell, to present item B seven, the ordinance to amend BMC Chapter one point oh six, entitled Public Records.
Oh, come on, council member Mothard, this was the best part.
Knock on it.
Just kidding. Um, so um, I hope that you got the um, the packet with refresh later this afternoon to have the red line version and so you can see what changed, but um. The reason it's changing, and this is something that Angela asked of me, that I bring forward, she's um, as you know, on leave. Um, we amended our rates and fee table to um reflect that. The change, but we never amended the code. The councils have done this. Um, we just need to make our codes match up with the rates and fee table that you already adopted. You'll see, so we've done that here. And then while we were doing that, if you scroll down just a little bit, you'll see that there's a. A reference pursuant to the Public Disclosure Act, that's actually not a thing. We need to make that public record back. So just change that little um, little part right there and otherwise this, this was just the housekeeping measure that I didn't last, like I did bring forward while she was out of.
Least we can do for us.
Thanks.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, how do we treat this item?
Consent. Consent.
Yeah.
Consent.
Right, thank you. Uh, you're also here and I'm gonna welcome our Human Resources Manager Charlotte Nelson for item B eight, which is the review and approval of Director of Public Works. Utility Job Description. Council, um I apologize in advance if you're upset with me printing this out, but I printed it out. So you can use your pen and do what you like. So. Yeah, I got her. Oh.
Charlotte, it's a big. He's being.
Okay. Do you wanna give us some uh background Kylie on?
Sure, um if you hadn't heard, Tom Lucky's retiring.
What? You're not even here to talk.
I know, yeah, so um.
Baloney.
Because of that, the city um will have a vacancy at his um spot and just like um our most recent, you know, parks director position. Here that council would want to look at the job description um before it gets posted and we'd like to get it posted soon, so. But, you know, it's a two-part process with the mayor giving a confirmation or appointment to the council confirming, so. Um, the job description is, has been modified some with um. Some updates and some of it just things that Chuck Sterling added, some of those things that Tom added, it's about it kind of reflected more of like what had been done and like. Kind of the breadth of the decision, but that's what it's for, is to, council to discuss that and then um. Let us know what you'd like to change, similarly like what we did.
So everything you read or change is changes.
Mm-hmm, that's like a new addition.
So if you haven't had a chance to look at this yet, I realize there's still a lot to digest.
Mm-hmm.
And uh Kylie talked about the timing and if council members have, wanna have comments and they don't have. It's kinda hard to press on them tonight if they weren't fully prepared, especially since. It wasn't highlighted, right? It was hard to read before in the back.
Right, yeah.
So can you, can you give us some suggestions out of hand, how to handle this? Otherwise this may end up being on the agenda for next week, so where are your thoughts?
Oh yeah, so I think one, one could be just a temperature check on, does the council want to alter this a lot? Um, and if there is that, we could set this over for another study session and have a deep dive. We get two weeks to chew on it then. Um, another thing that we could do is we could work on it with um. A, a sub form of the council, maybe the Chair of Public Work. Um, and another council member just to see if it's, there's any big changes and. Um, or do both of those. Um, we want you to be comfortable with the process, um but at the same time, we don't want it to like. You know, lag unnecessarily. Um, so however you wanna move it forward, really.
Does anyone have any thoughts on how we should proceed?
Yeah, I'd appreciate a little bit more time. Uh, and Jane, I'll defer to you as Chair of Public Work.
Well, I definitely would like a little bit more time, but I think um. Having a, a subcommittee with maybe me as the Chair of Public Works Committee, the Chair of the Finance Committee and our Council President, I think that would be a. A pretty good mix to um. Maybe we could. Get started on it and then send out, you know, and discuss it with council at our next. Full council meeting. One thing that I have concerns about is there's um. Community, there's a lot of community discussion that they feel we should hold off on hiring a public works director right away. I don't agree with that, but I think by having a, a full spectrum of our council reviewing the job description. I think that um might quiet those conversations a little bit and make a lot of the community members. Feel like if it's meeting the whole community's needs.
Sure, so that's also something that we could do with um, not just the description, but with uh the recruitment. I know some of you met with Tim before he was. Um, hired and if we did something similar for this position, um. You know, I think that the council has the ability, because it does come to you for confirmation, to certainly. Give feedback to the administration about what you wanna see before it comes to you.
Yeah.
Um, and including a. Committee like what uh Jane suggested, certainly makes sense and. That they review the job description before the council approves it and then they also participate in the recruitment before it comes to council for confirmation.
Okay, Anna?
Sorry? Um, yeah, actually writing job descriptions is one of the duties assigned to council in our city charter, so. Um, and to recap, the, the rewriting of the job description for the Parks Director, that was several steps where. I and others um produced a draft that was presented to the whole council. Um, it was then, Leanne was still here and Leanne then worked with us and then brought it back to us and there were several steps. And then a, a student was appointed to meet with the, and interview the Parks Director. So it was a much more comprehensive plan. Um, I am fine with Jane's plan and I, I particularly happy that. I don't, I hope I'm, I think I'm certain I'm not being favorite, showing favoritism, but Jane is the most qualified in public works that we've had on this council in my memory. So I'm particularly happy that she's going to be on this committee.
So if um, for Jane, Jeff and Eric, if you guess the bike, we can set aside some time to figure out some to read and go over it and. I'm, if you think we can get it polished up, include for consideration next week, we can do that or we should set it over.
We're gonna want more time.
Okay.
And ask them, affect the date of, of confirmation.
It's in June.
At a June, okay. So we have a little time, but we would also wanna kick off the search. Yeah.
Yeah, we, and, and nationwide search everybody, is everyone on the same page on that?
Yeah, yes.
I'm out of town until really Tuesday, so.
Okay, so why don't we um, just look to have this back in study session on the twelfth?
Four and a half months.
Yeah.
Great.
Just, just to throw out there to it, I, an excellent, excellent start. I'd also like to look at um, I can start looking some other. Cities uh descriptions as well, just for comparable cities that we're kinda doing our due diligence there. You may, you may have already.
So, yeah. So, we can do a, a maybe sometime toward the end of next week. That gives everyone about a week and then a couple days, at least a week to put some stuff together, ideas and then um have something for study session uploaded on. On the seventh.
I'm available the day after Wednesday, Wednesday and after, so.
Okay.
Very flexible.
And we can write to any of you with any suggestions?
Be careful.
Be careful, yeah.
Oh, that's right.
So this is, since it's a document, it'd be taken every one's input.
Yeah.
Um.
So we should hold her comment until, until the committee comes back to report to us.
Okay. And what, hopefully.
Or right now.
Right now, yeah.
Now.
Words like vision, accreditation, best practices.
Focus on design, especially since so many more grants are asking for um. Just shovel-ready, design-ready, they're breaking it out into those elements. Um, so focus on design would be particularly helpful. Experience with maintenance. Preferably someone who has actually been on the street, but hey.
Yeah, that's kinda hard sometimes.
Yeah, yeah, but somebody who like knows how to fill a pothole. And have it work.
So we'll like to set up a meeting um with Eric, Jeff and Jane around the sixth or seventh, maybe the sixth.
That's fine.
Okay.
I'll email you guys.
You have comparable?
Cool.
Excellent.
Okay. So we'll put this back on the study session for the twelfth, hopefully we'll have a polished product. And then we'll have comment from the entire council, then hopefully put it for the.
Nineteenth.
On the nineteenth. That's our timeline.
That's what it's good.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we have a similar review of, uh, potentially of the Legislative Office Manager Job Description. Once again, I have a. Paper copy to hand out, this is what's in your packet.
I think we did. Did we not just?
So one, one is Anna's and the one is in the packet.
Got it.
And I apologize if I'm gonna be confusing everyone. So the one that's in the packet, the one that's in the packet and um Charlotte's gonna help us here hopefully on this. So the, the way the process worked is we looked at the original description and I asked our former, at the time, our current Legislative Office Manager to take her first. Run at it. And then it went to us uh being Anna, Michael and I. And we took a run at it and then I gave it to Charlotte to put her HR experience on it. And that's what you have in front of you that's got the red. Highlights in it, okay? And then uh.
Oh, I do like.
When it got into the packet, uh I was, I wanted to get in the packet and then Anna gave me a, a link to another document. She had actually made some changes and actually cut a lot of the duplicative stuff.
Not the red line.
So I'm not asking tonight that we all sit down here in public and pick this and pick that out, but just in general, look at both, um if you're in agreement. Uh, Donna is uh. Cutting out some of the duplicative stuff and wordsmithing, uh I can work with Anna and.
Do not use the term wordsmithing.
Oh.
Anna doesn't like it.
Kylie knew that.
I'm just kidding. It isn't a bad word, though, it's not like a swear.
So no demerits, okay, so. All right.
Not this week.
Okay, not this week. I'm trying to be really good, I don't know if you've noticed this, okay, so. In any case, uh you, just take a look at it for the next few minutes. If you like that approach, I'm happy to sit down with Anna. I think we're in agreement on this and we can go ahead and just. Make the edits, but if, and if you don't see anything controversial in either one, I suggest we get it in the packet so we can hire the replacement. Have trust with us here.
I mean, I definitely like some of the corrections, the, the, the basic clerical errors.
Yeah.
Nope.
Yeah, so.
I intended it, but um.
Is there anything?
Could be emerged between these two, is that right?
Yeah, yeah, so is there anything missing? That's the point.
I'd like to see just some, maybe PowerPoint of some other kind of uh. Uh, you know, if she's gonna, she or he is gonna make flyers, you know. Uh, can't expect Canva or anything like that, but maybe, you know.
So I think you can't expect.
I think you can. Canva is baseline.
And, and that's in this job description, to be able to do flyers, that's a responsibility.
That's great.
I tried to.
Is there? For, well, for flyers, but is Canva, because there are flyers and then there are flyers. I've seen them. In the city.
Yes, I have some news on, so this is kind, so I. Charlotte, without saying the individual's name, did we reach out to that organization and say we're ready to bring up her seat?
Yeah, we have not heard back yet.
Okay, so there's a good possibility we're gonna get some twenty hour a week and I don't wanna give out the name. And it's of no cost to the city and this person has background in. Okay, so uh, anyway, I think in this day and age, we need to have, that's what's in here. Is a more, I mean, look, this position description was last updated, I don't know when, things have changed.
Yeah.
And so I believe versions that we have, the two both include all this technology updates, including being all the use Zoom and Teams and the features of. Of those products, uh Canva, it's more than just doing a PowerPoint and hey, here's, I wanna, they're gonna.
It's just.
Expectations are much higher. One thing, this may be controversial and I don't wanna get into current or past practices, but I put in there that basically this position is in person. And telework is situated and we don't need to get into full discussions, but I just need to know that's the consensus that we're good with that one.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're good with that.
Um, I wanted to know um. What I see missing in here is um experience that I maybe like humane society type work with herding cats.
I actually put that in.
Yeah, I, 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 I think I edited that out already. And there was some also guidance I relied on, on Charlotte. I'm not gonna say, so I gave Anna some compliments earlier on, some that was on, wasn't on paper or record, but I did give. I'd like her edits, but there were a couple that Charlotte didn't agree with and, and Anna was in agreement with because of.
The herding cats got taken.
No, no, not necessarily the herding cats, but uh. Just HR best practices, let's just leave it at that, okay?
Fine, fine. I trust, I trust you.
Thank you.
I trust you.
Okay, Jeff?
Still a question I have, I'm, I think it's Anna's edit on preferred qualifications of Bremerton residents, like strong local knowledge.
That's one we, okay, we, we already.
Out and I just said, I'd just like the opportunity to present it to the full council, that's it.
Okay, so the thought process is if you don't put it in the position description, but you could put it in an advertisement, maybe not those exact words, but concentrating on those type of qualities. So that's, okay?
I have to love B town.
I don't, I, yeah, I don't know that it's required for me that they be a Bremerton resident.
Preferred.
Alright.
Yeah, my only concern is limiting our um applicant pool, although I, I understand the reasoning for it, but.
So, yeah, and I don't necessarily, um, so I don't know if I saw the floor or not, I'm sorry, I'm just kinda speaking up. Um, and, and so under preferred qualifications, so then the idea for me, if I was to read this, I would feel like I would, I mean, I'm. Now, but if I lived in Fairgrounds area, I would feel like I wasn't highly qualified for this job. So.
So again, it, it won't be in this, but as far as the. Uh, Charlotte, can I, and this is kind of um working on your questions or concerns, how do you think we're gonna? Announce this job?
That's up to you guys, we could do it through HR, which we have a pretty good reach. Or we could, I think this is more at the level where you probably wanna do it through us. But if you wanna spend the money, we could go to a.
I don't think we have the money to do that this year or next.
It's not that level, level of.
Seventy grand.
Okay.
I have a question.
Okay, uh Jane and then Jeff.
So, the qualifications are um calling out for administrative office experience for four years. Somebody with, who is a paralegal for a few years would also qualify for this. And almost everybody going through college at this time would know how to do Zoom and. All kinds of presentations, so. To me, I don't know that they need. To me, I don't know that they need. Maybe it's preferred that they have. Four years of administrative. Background, but I think there's other, um. Past experiences that. Would also qualify them.
About administrative or office related background, whatever.
Yeah, I, right below it, it says an equivalent or combination.
Okay.
So hang on, Charlotte was gonna give a suggestion, go ahead.
Yeah, I. I think you could do it with, uh, two years or two years, but, but like, any, any combination of public too.
So ju- just as a reminder that we, we have, uh. Legislative Office Assistant as well, and I'm, this is an office manager, Charlotte, what does this position pay? Your member?
I think it's like eighty, at the top end of like eighty.
Fifty-nine.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's a substantial amount of money.
Yeah, and, and I'm not sure what Christine's responsibilities are, but if this person comes through.
Right.
Requirements, you want to.
Yeah.
And I, I personally, I, I don't, I, I don't wanna, um. I, I would like somebody that has. Oh. Good foundational experience, um, for this kind of role, and it's a professionalism thing. Um, I don't, I don't know that I would feel comfortable with somebody who, I mean, with just a couple of years of office experience. Uh, this is navigating a lot of complex. And moving parts, um, and you have to be. On top of your game, not only with your clerical skills, but your people skills and your knowledge of municipal local government. Um, uh, I appreciate that there's wording in here that says education at college level may be substituted, however, I would think that. Experience, and this is, and I got my master's degree, so I'm saying it, but experience, you know, weighs more, means more to me than, than the college for this type of role. Okay.
Jane, are you, and before I see to Jeff, are you okay with that, or?
Not really, cause I want to ask Charlotte a question, if somebody applies for this job that doesn't. Have exactly. The qualifications that are listed in here. Is the application just spit out because they haven't hit the keywords?
No, even if they're right in that area, what they're gonna do is, we're gonna put together a subject matter expert panel to review the application. And these are, you're gonna get, um, redacted, you're not gonna.
Okay. Okay.
Great.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, so Jane, are you, are you okay with the wording?
Yes, as long as it's real people looking at it and not an AI.
Okay, so Jeff, you have the floor.
Thanks, my other thought was, I take you back in some of the comments, is. On the municipal slash local government, so make sure that includes somebody at working at the state level, cause in the back of my head, there's. Like a lot of folks at Olympia that work for state reps or senators that may have done that a couple of years and really good training for this position.
Are people laid off of the federal?
So I suggest to build on that, we put in municipals. Slash or state municipal local government, all three, so they don't think that they're.
Yeah, so make sure they're there.
Federal, a lot of those. A lot.
We'll put that federal, state, municipal, actually, it should be with specialized government experience, we can work on that. So is there any other? Additions or must be removed on either Anna's or, or the version that was in the packet? And then Anna and I can just work on it together and get it in the pack.
Is there anything in here about communicating kind of policy?
Yes. Yeah, it's in there, this, this is pretty comprehensive as far as, is. Basically, this person is running this place during, which is what Lori did during the day. And alleviating the council members all administrative tasks and taking care of. Uh, informing the council members of all, but handling a lot of, look, uh, as council president, I'm not answering a bunch of emails, Christine's answering those emails. Or if their administration said they're going that way, that's the expectation, this person is, is getting those emails and if he or she can do it, she's answering it, so we're not answering.
Yeah, second.
Just supplemental material, can, can you also, I would like to make sure that I have a copy of the Administrative Assistant. Let us like box distant job description so that we can compare. Just for, just for informational purposes.
The current one?
Yeah, yeah.
And I have, um, Anna emailed me the, her version because it's not in the packet, so I can't read it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And then so Charlotte will send out the PD for, um, Office Assistant.
I do have a question, um, because of Jennifer's, uh, request that we see the other job description, when was, I mean. Job descriptions I think are, are wonderful documents and they're updated sometimes, often, but during a tenure of somebody's employment, um. When was the last time Christine's job description was updated? Is this an op, she might like to see it updated.
Yeah, I think the last time was in this, dirty word to me, it was the last time we did that.
Well, then, you know, maybe she might, she might like to see her own job description updated and it might, to make sure it's compatible with the other. I always like to see mine updated to fully reflect what I was doing or if it had grown. I don't know, go with point, Jennifer.
Uh, and I don't want to get too much into the HR of, of our staff, but, um. I just like, am, my wondering is, uh, in a situation where somebody is. Doing additional work above and beyond their job description, are they at all compensated or is there, is there a compensation that's occurring?
So like people in our office, right?
Okay, alright, thank you.
Alright, so Anna and I are going to merge the document, it's gonna be in the packet, if for any reason you're like, oh no, this is a no-go, we can pull the item, but we'd like to get moving, yes, alright?
Can I point out something that I would love to see, I don't know, maybe there's another, I was actually, no, we're, no, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, alright, thank you for that. And I'll, I'll talk to you after this meeting, we can set a time. The next item is the twenty-five, twenty-six council goals and priorities, that should, I do have the paper reading, but, uh, it is in your packet, nothing has. I have the paper version, I must hand it out. Already killed the tree.
Oh, no.
So, um, this is taken into account, you're, during the last study session, I made the edits or wrote down and Christine compiled it, I do believe it is correct. And that will end up going as a resolution for next week. If you guys are good. It's only two pages, I'm gonna let you take a second.
Thank you. I looked at this, so whenever you guys are ready. Really, really small ones.
One, one small as well.
What?
See, this is small.
Okay, even smaller.
Okay, I think we're ready, so Anna first and then Jeff.
Really small ones, uh, one, I, 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 uh, is this all schools within Bremerton city limits or just high schools? I mean, are we reaching out to elementary?
No, it, the intent is high school.
Okay. So, I, I think we should spell that out, otherwise we will.
It'd be high schools within Bremerton city limits.
Yeah, which, is there another?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you all knowing.
Okay, so, so help me out with the exact wording, so I don't mess it up. Reestablish outreach program with.
Why don't you just say high school?
High schools within Bremerton city limits.
There you go. Council initiated, needs a hyphen.
It does, I know, I saw that too.
Um, housing equity number seven.
So show me where the council initiative is and then.
It's under, uh, eight, it's number eighteen.
Okay, alright, go ahead.
Um, I know we have proved this before, but surplus city-owned parcels, in this context, surplus is being used as a verb. And it's basically telling us to get rid of city-owned parcels. Um, so I, I'm suggesting develop. Or, yeah, develop or explore or.
Surplusing is part of it because surplusing is a way to generate revenue.
Right, but here surplus is supposed to be the adjective defining type of city-owned parcels, for example, we are sitting in a city-owned parcel that we do not wish to surplus.
How about consider, how about consider?
Something stronger would be great, but I'll take it, just.
Create surplus plan? I mean, I don't know, whether you attend them.
Ooh, plan.
That's asking a lot of, uh.
That is another person's job.
DCD.
How about support, we're saying support left, right and center.
I mean, I.
So you could also just say surplus excess city on.
You could.
That indicates that it's, the city doesn't need it, and you need it.
It is a verb, but I think we want others to do all this, so it's surplus.
Encourage. We are the ones that approve the surplusing, typically, we do surplus, I mean. Um, but I think that to Denise's point, we're asking. Members of administration to do something for us and, um. I would love to see, I mean, isn't this the year to have a plan? I'm, I'm gonna go back to that term because, I mean, we can't, we're not ready to just, I think one of the strategies that was talked about is the little chunks. You know, that could be potentially sold to the neighboring owners, but I, I would love to see a plan. Or, I mean, I don't want you.
About policy. Policy to dispose of surplus properties.
How about make available?
I like policy.
Like advertise or?
Make him available.
Uh, but this isn't.
But we can't, we do that?
We won't always have cer, that's the idea, we won't always have surplus. Properties, the, the idea is that we're getting rid of them, right, like, so we're not always, so policy would be, I mean, we could, sure. But why create a policy that's temporarily usable? I mean, I don't know, maybe there's gonna be a time where the city's gonna be like buying a bunch of li, land again, but, um.
Well, this would be a policy for when the city has surplus left. Could we ask Garrett?
Sure.
So I have, before we ask Garrett, I have a, a suggestion, maybe we can go to Garrett. So the wording would be as follows. Set policy. Or surplusing excess city-owned parcels for affordable housing.
Yep. Sure, I'm fine with that.
Copy print. And whenever it's my turn, I know a couple people are ahead of me, I guess.
My, my final is like the smallest, it's a small, um, and it's number twelve, I think water quality should be lowercase.
Yep.
That's it.
I have all those, and Christine's listening, but I have all, okay.
Great, thank you.
Uh, who had the floor next?
You go with me, mine's the very last one, number nineteen. I was looking back at our notes and discussion and I was just gonna add, updating the complete streets ordinance, including creating a citizen-led committee. I think we had consensus for that, specific, specificity of a citizen-led committee, I didn't want to lose track of that.
Yes.
I'll make exact wordings, including.
Including a.
Resident led.
Yeah, citizen.
Resident led.
Resident led, resident only.
Well, if, we're trying not to use citizen, that's.
You include.
A resident.
Resident.
No word here. Commission comprised of residents.
Community members.
Is there another term? Okay. Wouldn't use that.
Community members is what they use for audit and for the tree committee.
Doesn't have to be a citizen, a, a resident of Bremerton?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so then we use the term resident.
Yeah.
Okay.
Update the complete streets ordinance to include a resident-led.
Comma, including a resident-led, cause there were other.
Include, okay, including a resident with a hyphen, led.
Thank you.
Including a resident-led.
Committee.
Commission.
Under the mayor?
It's a commission, yeah. It's not a council committee.
Okay, so including a resident-led commission and that's the only thing I need to add on?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
So it's the complete streets commission?
It should have been, it might, so.
But I, I'm good with that, that makes sense.
Maybe use a council.
Yeah, I know, that's, that's.
Yeah.
So that, that.
I think it was missed, just named when it was created, yeah. Planning commission, park commission, consultation commission.
Tree commission.
Tree commission, should be.
You want to make it the ADA commission and.
Yeah, really should.
But consistently with truck language, but if not, it'll die, yeah.
Jennifer, do you have comments?
I, I, not about this, but I have a, a, well, yes, about goals and priorities. I'd be remiss if I didn't, um, in light of things having changed again, um, if I didn't. Just throw it out there for reconsiderations, support diversity, equity and inclusion.
Position.
There might come a time, there might come a time, and he, he might have him. Where we need to support with some extra funding for the program. Um, and so there could be a day when, you know, they come to us and they say we need to, we would like to send this person to this training, or we would like to. You know, support them in another financial way.
That could happen in any position though.
Yeah.
I, I think.
I'm just, just, I'm, I'm just throwing it out, I just, I think it's good to use strong language.
It's making a statement though, instead of really being something that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I think we do that often here, we make statements in the way that we use language in our goals and priorities. So.
I see two separate ideas, one is supporting diversity, equity and inclusion. And then the other is supporting staff. In that case, I think support staff across the city. But I'm hap, I'm happy with the.
I'm just throwing it out there, it doesn't seem like there's consensus, but I would be remiss, and there was support at the, at the.
I'm happy to put in support, um, diversity, equity and inclusion within, within the city.
Okay.
And that would probably come in community and employee engagement. I don't think we can do anything related to the position, cause we made that, we did that, our work was done.
Support diversity, equity and inclusion, which is what I threw out at the.
Yeah, and that, that makes it possible for us down the line in this year. To say, well, I'm supporting this because it's one of our goals. And I, I really like the idea that you floated years ago, which is like, always have to make sure that what you're doing ties back to your goals.
So Kylie, you, you missed the earlier conversation.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I thought we were done with that part, so I mean.
This is city council goals and, city council goals and priorities and we have a, a request to add, go ahead, say the word.
Support diversity, equity and inclusion in the city. Capital seat city.
And you're gonna put that in community employment engagement?
I'm proposing it.
No, I, I'm just, that was, uh, a statement, that's the proposal that's on the board.
Yeah.
Kylie, given the current envi- environment, is that, is that something you would recommend to do at this time?
One of the concerns that, uh, everyone's tracking is that there's not a lot of consensus about what you mean when you say that.
Um, and so one of the things is that you, and you've seen this in the, um, discussion, and I'm sorry, Jane, I'll, so you can hear.
Thanks.
So you hear some people, when you hear that you support diversity.
So you hear some people, when you hear that you support diversity, they hear that you support um. Things like hiring quotas or trying to get um. A certain number of a certain type of person in your um. Rank of employees.
Isn't that true of all communication?
No, it's so pause, but the name of the, the name of our new position is.
Diversity and community engagement manager.
I mean, what about language like that?
Support diversity and communication.
Right, so what I'm saying is that, so a lot there, these particular terms.
Is what I'm saying.
Right, and so I, one of the, I heard in a discussion recently was um. For folks that are engaged in this work right now, is I'm that they're gonna focus on the work, not the words. Um, and and right now, these these words, they words should have. The triggering doesn't bother me, to me, it's that we should have common understanding meaning, that's how, why we have language to begin with, right?
Given us to conceal our thoughts.
What is the legally?
What I'm saying is, I don't know that this, it tells someone what it is that we're doing.
So, when we are doing diversity, equity and inclusion work. Um, and the language is ambiguous, absolutely, um, but the new court case um that has allowed us to kind of know.
That what I'm saying is that you don't really, you don't really say what you're doing when you say you're doing DEI work.
Right.
So what is it that you want to do?
Um. Okay.
And let's say.
Alright.
That, because it's right now, this is um, these particular words, and it's not that. Um, I'm against the concepts that I think that I understand all of you to mean them as, because I've worked with you for several years now. What I'm saying is that there's not unified meaning as to what, some people think that this means. Photos, I think you might remember, these were people that were sitting on the right side of the room last week. And then there are other people that see that as um, and and that kind of stuff like is is actually is illegal, it's not gonna be.
We never did.
Right, but there are.
That affirmative action is illegal in state of Washington.
Some people hear that word, and that's what they think, that that's what means, that that's what we're doing. And so what are some precise words, like words that are not um imprecise and that have common understanding? That we could use to communicate what it is that we wanna do.
Foster mutually supportive environment.
How about work with the new hire, forget the right word, the new hire. Increase council's community engagement.
The other thing I would say is, one of the things that this person needs a budget, guys, and that's on you to figure out.
That's what I'm saying, if we don't have, this is exactly what I'm saying, so we need to figure out how to. Keep all the things that we do within our goals and priorities, right? And so what is language that we can adopt to support this very new position that's going? She's borrowing paper clips from legal.
We're gonna, we're gonna give her all this.
Probably, they're probably gonna let her print, except.
Yeah, yeah. Um, but I'm just saying that that's like.
Yeah, I see where you're going, I like that, actually, because that ties into your budget adjustment.
Right, right, that was kind of the concept that we needed the person to tell you what she need. And you need to listen to her, because that's what we're hiring, is that she knows what she needs.
So good at that.
Can we support the community engagement? Manager.
Establishing program, yeah.
At this point, I'm thinking Eric proposed this earlier, it's like, let's add it later.
I'm sure, she might have some, she might have some language that um.
How about if we bring it up after she's onboarded, we'll readdress it.
Yeah.
Okay, I know Denise like, Denise wants to move on from this, I got you loud.
It's too soon, I'm try, you know, it's too soon.
It's not too soon, it was, it was never, never should have been, it never should have been. An issue, right, so, yeah. It's no, it's not too soon, it's about a few hundred years too late. Um, anyway, alright, let us all thank you for the conversation.
I don't think the city information.
The entire conversation.
I'm gonna make those edited changes, I I have it here on this copy, I will give it to Christine and. Shall be done, it can be in the packet, okay, so again. Help me out on it, it's in the packet, and it's all, you've messed up again, Eric, that's not unheard of. And then we can make that change, I'd like to vote on the resolution, are we gonna do consent?
Consent.
Okay, consent, and now let's go ahead and take a ten minute read.
Yay.
And with that, come back at six forty seven. And I, let's be polite.
And at six forty seven, we're on recording. I think we're all good. All right. Next item up is the resolution to repeal. Well, ironic, resolution to repeal resolution number three, three, six, six, and adopt updated council rules and procedures. I'm presenting this item. You guys recall during a council retreat, we proposed adding the parks committee to finance and parking. And that's with this reflex. That's the only changes in the council rules procedures. It's highlighted, like I think it's in two different areas. On like the page five, chair of parks, finance, investment and park committee, and then it says standing committees. That is the only change in that.
Consent.
Thank you. All right.
Although I think it would be much more musical if it was finance, investment, parks and parking, but okay.
All right. Thank you. I waffle. Okay, the next item.
Okay.
Just formally, I will. Jennifer, I'm gonna let you handle this, but if you want me to, you're.
No, go ahead. Go ahead. Lead us off here.
So I'm gonna say this is the acceptance of the lodging tax advisory committee twenty twenty five funding recommendations. Do you all recall last study session, Jennifer gave you kind of a preview? I think we've had several people that have been the lodging tax advisory chair. And so we recognize the processes in general to go with the guidelines of the lodging tax committee because people spend a lot of time and effort on it and then we give them the council's general goals. Unless there's something glaring, you accept what the committee comes forth with. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Jennifer and she can take on the rest of this presentation and discussion.
Yeah, and I don't know how much really there is to share. So you, everybody received the document that outlines the amount. And I'm here and I, and we did go through and I kind of answered some questions about, you know, viability and kind of the thought process of the committee. I don't have a huge presentation for you because I feel like we did talk about it. I'm ready and willing to move forward with whatever the council decides on this. So that is my presentation, folks. What will, does anybody have any comments, any questions about the process or the awards? That weren't discussed last week?
You know, knowing that Eric and Jane and I, this ad hoc, are gonna look at Yes. the Westbrook Maine report and distill that and bring some recommendations to council. I do know how much these people invest and I think you did a great job. I was on the call and I think you did a great job of allowing the committee to function as the committee, right? Um, and those things that come up are very real. You know, a member saying, I have friends who are applying. That's very real, you know, that's it's a close knit community. They all know each other that work tourism and that type of thing. And so you know, LTAC is, the way it's legislated, is full of conflicts of interest and I think it's gonna be our job to try to finesse that out of the way with some recommendations. It'll make it easier for the LTAC to really determine impact because that's always been my main concern. Is that I don't see the impact of this kind of investment that we're making and when we award something to everybody, um, I don't think that's a good investment strategy. So I look at this as investment and, but I, again, if I didn't know that we were gonna be coming back to council, I'd have a lot more questions. But I had those when I was chair of another committee too. I had those concerns. Concerns have not gone anywhere. I still have them, so.
I'm.
Jane?
I'm very concerned about the amount of funding given to Quincy Square. This is we don't have any other real funding to get the programs together, which is what is going to be one of the hugest impacts or could be one of the hugest impacts on tourism in the city.
And, and again, the reason for the small amount was because the, the committee did not believe that this project was going to generate heads and beds for the entire year that it was gonna be later in the year, but not to say that I agree with it, but that was their point. They said, well, it's not gonna even, you know, be open until a few months into the year. So that was there. Yeah. Anna, give me.
Yeah, but I'm waiting. Oh, Jane, you want more?
Well, I mean, the thing is, is here it is March. By the time anybody gets any money, it's going to be April, May, and some of the Quincy Square money, if I understood correctly, was to start figuring out the programming, which would be happening now if they had sufficient funding. So I have concerns about that.
Okay, Anna?
Thanks. Um, I still do not feel that we should give money to the Kitsap Building Association. That said, the bylaws of LTAC don't require events to be held in Bremerton, right? So I'm asking LTAC to comply with something that's nowhere written down. But for the ad hoc committee, I personally would really hope that we would be funding things in Bremerton. Yeah.
I agree.
Yeah. So many of these names have Kitsap in them. No, I have things that I personally would like to get more funding. I agree with Jane's concern about Quincy Square. I would be quite happy with taking this back to the LTAC committee and saying, give the fifteen five for KBA to Quincy Square, which would still be less than half of what they're asking for.
We can't compel the committee to make that recommendation.
Okay, we can't compel them to consider it?
We cannot compel them.
To consider it?
We cannot compel. Not enough, right? But we can suggest.
Make that recommendation.
A recommendation, but not a compel.
You can send it back and I can send it right back, but yeah.
And if.
There is not a mechanism where you can, you can give them feedback on why it's not being adopted.
Right.
We can give them feedback on, we can give them feedback on why it's not being adopted, you say?
Yes.
Yeah.
So in other words, we cannot adopt this.
Correct.
What you can't do is just
Change the word.
Change it all up and then pass it yourself. You have to give it back.
No, that's, yeah. So that, that's my recommendation is, is ax KBA and give that money to Quincy Square. Not ax them, what's a
Yeah, I don't know.
It's a bad word to remove them from the list of recipients.
Second question?
Sure, go ahead.
Question. Um, I know that Kitsap Bazaar was, there was some limbo or something that they were in. And I, I would rather any awards that are not made be funneled back into this year rather than keep them until next year's awards. Could we let the, the committee know that we'd like to, to make sure that any funding not I guess that's the only one.
Well, and honestly, um, so people gotta count on money when they're, especially with these big projects, right? They're gonna, they're gonna have to count on money. So it's, that five thousand isn't gonna be matter, right, to Quincy Square? So there are, they, Public Works isn't gonna be like, five thousand dollars, we're waiting on that five thousand, we can't move forward to the next phase.
So I think that's a bias on the committee that the city is this huge government infrastructure with plenty of money. And, um, and we're, obviously we're not, we're looking at a deficit. I think it would be fairer to ask the recipient who's sitting right there. You know, you usually ask, and I think we did ask probably, if you don't get this amount, what are you gonna do? Or, you know, are you gonna go under? My estimation, if some of these awards, I mean, a thirty five hundred dollar award of LTAC funds is you know, anything under ten grand seems small, but to me, not making a real difference.
Before we go there, I make a suggestion. It's actually, that's also the question. Mr. Riley. I see there's an even dollar amount, uh, being for the budget of eight hundred thousand dollars. That tells me that there's excess funds in the LTAC. Do you happen to know on the top of your head what the excess funds number is? Is it anywhere near, the city is short on their ask by thirty three thousand five hundred dollars? Oh, yeah. So here's, here's my proposal and I need to know if this, I, I don't wanna mess with the process. I don't know what the applicant's ask, not respect for them, I'm asking it gets remanded back to the LTAC committee. The city is gonna allocate an additional thirty three thousand five hundred into, onto the eight hundred thousand that's available. And we're asking the committee to award it the city of Bremerton Quincy Square project. Am I allowed to make that? Is the council allowed to make that right?
Here's the are they? The feedback would be the city that we are not adopting it because we do not believe that Quincy Square was allocated enough funding. That's the feedback, right?
Right. Well, we will
Yeah.
Get more money and then, um, can you adjust the, I think the other question, can you adjust basically the parameters?
And I think that was my question too.
I don't know, I don't think I have that, but you know. I don't know, just.
Yeah, I understand.
I mean, the money's there.
That any excess funds be dedicated to.
That's our.
Right, but that's a, that's a timing issue. So there is an excess pool of funds now that just carried, it carried forward. That wasn't allocated for the eight hundred thousand. I'm asking to take that excess fund balance and put thirty three five into this one.
And I do, I do believe I asked what the excess fund, like, why was the number so round?
Yeah.
Doesn't seem right. Um, and that was part of the conversation, but we, we never could figure out how much.
It's whatever Mike Riley tells you it is.
How we come up with the funding with LTAC, we predict what we believe we're seeing in the current year is the fund balance remaining
Yeah.
this year. But there's always this, this gap there. You wanna make sure you're carrying a balance for the new year and hoping you pay your project. So it's, it's a forecast. And so we come up with a round number this year. We just, you know, we don't allocate everything in the fund plus revenue. If you shortfall, you cannot, you already, but you're, you're measuring the forecast of this one.
And so the question's gonna be a process, like, is the, that's the and, and I'll look resources, like, we set a amount.
Yeah.
And we want to amend the amount that we set after the recommendation. And with a recommendation that upon remand. So I'll find out.
Um, that'd be cleanest.
I think so. I, I do have a statement I wanna make before we close the topic out. And it's not about sending it back to the committee. It sounds like there's some general consensus and I'm happy to facilitate another meeting. And hopefully we don't play a lot of ping pong or, you know, get this. But something that I'm just gravely, not gravely, that's not the right word, but I'm astutely aware of is the lack of data that we have for short term rentals. I would, I just really wanna encourage y'all, we gotta get more of that data. Every time I travel, I mean, unless I'm with, doing something with the city, I'm staying at an Airbnb, at a Burvo, I'm doing a short term rental. Denise, you know as well as I do, this is the way people are traveling.
That's due to ask is Mike Riley.
And so.
How much do we get from Airbnb or VRBO or any of the other hosting platforms or?
It would be really great to have, to have that voice on this LTAC. It should, the way, I mean, we want our hotels to succeed and also we wanna face reality of where the funding is coming from. So, um, it sounds like y'all wanna have another meeting, so Christine is on and she's.
So the, the question is, if Svenel finds out we can't increase the amount and remand it back, what does the council wanna do? Do you want it to be on the agenda for next week?
Oh, we're still funding.
This is, I mean, I, I'm okay with delaying this if you wanna delay this, but this is going on a while.
Yeah, and it's late anyway.
I don't think, I don't, I think you were saying that it was all copacetic. If we get, if there's extra funding.
I wanna find out if there's a
Oh, I apologize.
About, the, the, I understood that we were trying to increase the total amount of funding that the committee considered.
I think what we need is an accurate amount. Uh, do we have capacity in LTAC for, is there excess funds that aren't accounted for? If there are excess funds without even naming it, okay.
There always is. That's what I'm saying. What I'm wondering is, can we amend the amount we started with?
Okay.
The group that you're during the process or does that?
Yeah.
Is that in some way static in this cycle that after we said it?
Yeah, there's two things. If you're gonna amend the dollar amount, then you're directly appropriate, you're asking directly appropriate that and to this, there's a lot of this.
That's the nuance we just stated publicly, right? Like.
Right, and like if.
Good with that.
Right. If, if the city amended the amount, could they send it back and say, oh, we're giving this other group? You know what I'm saying? Like, and then you.
But this is all about conflict of interest. This whole thing is conflict of interest, so.
It's not a question that I.
Thank you, thank you.
So I, I don't really view this as a conflict of interest in that we're not harming any of these people's requests in the recommendation. It would be a one thing if we set you know, to, to the other effect, uh, you know, but this is actually the cleanest way to give the city's resources without harming the people and, and respecting the committee for the, the, what they did. So I don't know, it's maybe get some legal guidance and then, so if the legal guidance, if we can do it, is that the direction of the council to remand it back to them?
Yes.
And if, if it is not, what is the wish of the council? Do we wanna put this on the agenda for next week or do you wanna hold it off for two more weeks?
I would be okay with it. If we cannot, if we exhaust, obviously we want this funding. And so if we exhaust any avenue to obtain them, we go ahead and approve these. We talk about the need to support Quincy Square and that just means it's now on the mayor and others to try to find that.
And.
The money.
And my request is, um, obviously I will need to know what's decided, so I know what kind of presentation to give. Um, so if you just keep me in the loop on that, um, that would be appreciated and, and in the meantime, will we just find out during the briefing?
No, no, no.
Okay.
So Kylie can contact you or I can contact you and let you know. I will, well, if the council sees it in the, in the packet, you know the answer.
Right.
Okay.
Uh, if, if not, I'm sure she'll reach out to you and let you know as the chair of, of what the legal ruling is, whether we can do it.
I'm just free to break down there. We've done this before. I don't know, I can't remember which year it was, but this has happened. Um, it, it does link to the process because once it goes back, then they have forty five days.
Yeah. I got it. Christine will, will have to get these folks together again.
Right. Um, and then after that is it goes back and then it comes back to council again and then I'm just saying, it's just figuring out whether we can change the board.
Okay.
Okay, it looks like we have direction on that one then. Hey, folks, that was a pretty big agenda bill briefings and information presentation plus the mayors. Now we're down to just general council business.
Great.
So yeah, oh, oh, yeah. So for the record, Councilmember Coughlin actually excused himself from the prior discussion because he's on the board of one of the potential recipients of lodging tax money. So welcome back.
Welcome back.
Good to be back. Okay, so now we're gonna turn to general council business. First item up is Public Works Committee briefing, Vice President Revolovsky.
Thank you. Let me see if I can read my notes. It's gonna be a little more light. Um.
We started off with a, a five year sidewalk plan and paving. These are the plans for what our city crews are going to be doing because we don't know in five years what grant money we're gonna have for capital projects. So they had a couple little modifications to make, but these are all up on the city's website. Uh, year by year telling you what areas sidewalks are going to be constructed and paving. And it was really well put together. Ron hasn't, you know, worked here, Ron Moore, the operations manager hasn't been here a long time and he put together something that we've been waiting for, for a long time. So I was really happy with that. And so was the rest of the committee. Uh, we discussed Sixth Street. They have a plan now where we're gonna have one more in-person meeting before they present to the council what the staff would like for the preferred plan, which would be a fifteen percent plan. And that would be sometime most likely in September, we would be having that discussion. There's, so the in-person meeting will be late spring or early summer. Nothing definite yet, but definitely in person. Another large project we talked about is the manganese treatment plant. It's about seven million dollars. Uh, some of our wells produce way too high of manganese and that is unsafe for children's, children, infants and adults and that the amount that is safe has been dropping and dropping. So it's definitely something we need to correct sooner rather than later. We had a good discussion on the wastewater comp plan, which you were shown tonight. And then a sewer camera van, which doesn't sound real exciting to a lot of people, but I was thrilled because it's gonna have a much longer cable. So when, um, a resident has a sanitary sewer failure, our crews can go out and pinpoint exactly where the break in their line is or, or close to it within a couple feet, which will save them a lot of money for their contractor having to dig up their yard. It won't be as invasive as it used to be. It's very expensive, but it should last for years. I believe the old one we've had since two thousand eight and this one is much more suitable for our needs. And then we did discuss, there is a complaint on Elmira about speeding and staff wants to wait until they have fully developed their traffic calming policies before they proceed with, with anything to solve that problem. They're hoping for more enforcement, but our, we don't have enough police on the force that are assigned to traffic to stay on one street day and night. So that was the general thing on public works. Jeff, did you have anything to add?
Yeah, the thing is on, on Sixth Street, so, um, yeah, appreciation to Public Works for, for working hard on that one. I think the proposal is to have a contract come to us, um, obviously not deny, but the next cycle out. In that contract, the proposal is not to have right away acquisition for the project. There's, I think there's only one sticky point of the one back and looked at it, which is, which is Nabel and Six. Some of the designs that there in one of the There in one of the alternatives previously presented, there was proposed right away acquisition on the Arco gas station. And so I'm hoping we get a little clarification on that of what the pros and cons are before we decide whether to go fully forward with no right away. Versus looking at that that piece. And then I think there's still some discussion that needs to happen on the process going forward and how the different possible components come to us in terms of alternatives. What that what that decision process looks like, nothing to hash out right here tonight, but I just, I genuinely really want to make sure that goes. That goes smoothly and just that we're all on the same page on how that process will unfold.
Okay, any questions on that, Street Council? No, Donna, go ahead.
Yes. Uh. Thank you. Uh. I'm getting tired, so it's taking a long time to formulate my question. Thank you.
There, no question.
No question. Okay, very good. Next, uh, maybe Councilmember Mockler would like to talk about this one, AWC Action Days Conference. So we had council members Chamberlain Coughlin and Mockler attend that last week. How'd it go?
It was a little dramatic start for the two of us.
Yeah.
When I was there at the beginning, all the way from the beginning till the end, but.
Twenty-six-year-old car had no problems getting to Lake City.
My rental car broke down and Jennifer was.
Uh, the only in an accident, but not harmed at all.
Yeah.
Um, I was, yeah, um, but we, um. Uh, I think most importantly, the is the next day, the lobby day, which we were all present for. Um, and a lot of new faces that we haven't, you know, that's something like a couple of these faces we haven't lobbied to before, right? Um, and so that was, I, in my perspective on things is this is the relationship building phase.
Yeah.
Um, and we're all practicing, um, you know, like our talking points and at the same time we're building this relationship with these folks. Um, and so what are your takeaways, counselors?
I think it all went well. We got across all our main points and I think we divvied up the the different points well and was well received. And they've got difficult, difficult jobs and decisions, but we saw all. All five of our, uh, reps and senators from the twenty-third and twenty-sixth and just one, one eighth, one of them.
I was like, great, oh, okay, thank. So I thought the conference itself, um. It still compares poorly to twenty twenty-three when it was at the. Big place that had breakout, where you could have breakout rooms. We were literally most, almost all the time in a basketball court. Um, which is is great, but it was very difficult to to form the kind of. Connections with people from other jurisdictions that were such a valuable part of twenty twenty-three. Basically, you went to a table, you sat at that table. And you were there all day. There was a more. Talking and talking and talking and then briefly having questions. Um, than than in previous years, the. Um. A lot of them were just, you know, after someone is lecturing to you for about forty-five minutes. It's just really unless they're saying, and the other million dollars I'm gonna give you, which none of them did.
Well.
There was.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, our former Bremerton Police Chief Strachan delivered a, who's now the Chair of the Washington.
And apparently my constituent.
Yeah.
That was funny to him.
He he delivered a a piece.
Maybe he moved it. We don't need to talk about where he lives.
Sorry.
He delivered a long speech that was very close to, uh, what Chief Wolf is. The way Chief Wolf describes the role of the department in in Bremerton, so that was pretty great. For the lobbying, I think we need to change the way we do this. Um, I was really lucky that I was able to find a bill HB one nine six six, which does double the cap on public works projects that can be done in-house. So from seventy-five and one fifty to one fifty and three. It puts on a stipulation that, uh, it has to be like exigent, which is their new. Synonym for emergency, but at least it was something, it was a bill and. These legislators were so beaten down by the budget meetings they've been attending.
Right.
That having it be a bill or a budget line item was really helpful. And so I think we need to start working on this in October or September. Developing what are our our council's top priorities and working with our local legislators before they go into session. So that they can consider sponsoring a a bill or multiple bills. Um, and and just to say that, uh. One thing people did like about HB nineteen sixty-six without this stipulation was no fiscal impact to them. So that that was it. And I just want to shout out to Brian. Who was great. He was great. Really helped us. Find down our our words and when we asked for criticism, he gave.
And I think between the conference and lobbying, there seems to be a disconnect too. Right, they're telling us here are the priorities, here are the bills, you know, they're these are the ones we want you to focus on. And then when we get to the legislators offices. They may put them on their radar, but they, like you said, this came out of a budget sobering budget meeting. Um, where, um, they're being told, like, you know, there's not gonna be any, anything with a fiscal note attached, it's going to be app. And so, uh, it is good to go into these meetings with legislators and and hear the news. Here, like, what are they dealing with? And what I really appreciated is Brian gave us the assignment to also ask, what can we do for you?
Yes, so instead of the other way around.
Right, and so, um, we got some good. Good feedback that way too, and and that's all part of the relationship building. Um, I think, you know, we can't go in and, I mean, we're just one interest group of many, right? I mean, we're the best for the city of Bremerton. We're the best one, but we're just one of many going in there day after day after day lobbying to them.
You're going in there, and this was something that AWC did bring up in their advocacy lectures was that. We're not just going in there lobbying for some special interest group.
Right.
Like each of us represents over seven thousand people. So that's a, that's a big burden.
But number up.
Please, did you want to say something?
There was an email that came in, uh, from AWC at about six fifteen this evening and had eight, eight takeaways from AWC days. And it's just, I thought it was good.
Thank you.
Look at.
Thanks.
All right.
That is it.
Thank you. Let's go on to the Audit Committee briefing.
Okay, one moment. Um, Audit Committee. Uh. The. Are basically what we discussed is the cost management analysis. Continuing to do so much of our outreach of contracts and consultants for bringing that position in-house. Um, and I'll just go through the litany again. Like outreach generally consists of, um, sending out a survey. Getting responses, analyzing the the responses and presenting the the results of the analysis to council and the public. That's a a set of actions that we see over and over and over again. Um, in contracts. So we talked about that and, um, there was a misunderstanding about. How many years back, uh, Jenny Sims needed to look and and so she she had been under the impression that she needed to look back ten years. But it's still just will be the normal three to five. Um, she's got a a bunch of comparables. She's in touch with staff here who've been very helpful. The only thing she asked us to do, and so I'm asking you to help me with this. Is what are specific contracts that, um, that you remember have an outreach, um.
Aspect.
SCJ Warren Avenue Bridge Joint Compatibility Transport. These are all all Public Works ones. Sixth Street, Naval Avenue, um, the transportation element of the comp plan. That's all I can think of off the.
In Park, I would say.
Well, in in Park is the is the is now being reviewed by legal, but that was, uh, what Jenny was just working on. And I, in my last report, I was like, well, the we're still looking at the costs, but the main thing seems to be that everybody who brings it in-house. Wishes that they had not. Like the same way the police are really happy that they don't have to do animal complaints. But like whatever we have.
I thought you were looking for more, um, uh, contracts that had public outreach component.
So In Park has public outreach?
Maybe I'm confused on what.
In in other words, you remember, um, SCJ came back to us for a contract amendment for more outreach because. Right, they've received so many public comments after Josh Farley publicized what was going on. Um, and they were, one of their subcontractors were in charge of the outreach. And running that. So that's, that's the kind of thing we're looking at, like PRR.
Sorry, it's all actually specified in the contract itself.
Exactly, yeah, either like the the main contractor is doing it or they're subcontracting it out. That would be really helpful for Jenny, so if you can't think of one right this second, which I get. Please email it to me and once I have a gang of them, I'll I'll forward them all to Jenny. Um, that was, that was pretty much it. We talked about revising the work plan. But since we're not going to do that until April. You know, we're just, we'll think then about revising it. All done? Any question?
Uh-uh.
Okay.
Interesting.
Right, let's turn to finance investment and park committee.
Park, yeah, Park, yeah.
P FIP.
Sounds good. I totally broke council rules, so they already called it Parks and we had Parks there at the meeting already, so. Jumped ahead, I know, one day in advance. Uh, there is a local records grant that Hans is applying for through the Secretary of State's office to help, um. Uh, upgrade our self-serve public records repository, which is needed since we're getting, we're getting more and more public records requests, so. That's not coming to council, just a heads up and fingers crossed we get that, no matching funds required. Uh, we looked at the, um, missy pulled together the transactions between twenty-five and a hundred K. Uh, over the past year, um, that didn't come to council because we raised the the authority cap from twenty-five to a hundred. Um, really nice presentation on the breakdown of all that. I think it'll be, if it's not already forwarded to all of council. Uh, my takeaway was, uh, a big chunk of that was procurement, things like vehicles and equipment. Um, I think we we focused on the more visible stuff like like streets, uh, that were used. Um, something one of the people looking at further. Um, and then. Michael had a good suggestion that we could discuss this down the road of and then we'll we'll bring it back up next month's meeting. Uh, maybe we keep the hundred K limit if we don't want to change it, but if we if we don't want to change it. Maybe we just ask that anything over fifty is just an extra heads up. This isn't for your authority, but just for your awareness, um, just so we're we're aware what funds are being spent. Uh, so take a look at that, um. Take a look at that, your mention, we can talk about it next time we're forum. Uh, Parks, uh, has launched the pros plan update and has a, in my opinion, uh, really excellent survey out for comment. All the way open until April thirtieth and there's already five hundred responses received, which is great feedback. I ran through it myself. I thought it was excellent questions. Open-ended responses allowed, good demographic information at the end. Um, and that's excellent. They're planning on a summer open house. And essentially they're hoping to have a complete plan by August and then in our hands, uh, mid-December for. Approval and it's all going through the Parks and Rec Commission as well. So great outreach there. The.
Sorry.
Long golf club is upgraded in the driving range. It's all within the, uh, golf funds, nothing else from the city. And we had a really good, uh, update on the, uh, parking progress, uh, uh, from Melinda. And what they're looking at for twenty twenty-five, uh, which I think can also be sent out to all of council. If there's any, any question. Okay, and then we're tracking golden priorities for, uh. Here, probably our first thing we'll be looking at, uh. MFT and we talked about what data we all want to see to be able to make decisions on that and we'll be asking, uh, mostly DCD for that data. As about our community partners.
You're free on your committees to tell the council at any time. Christine and I are working on this plan. We're gonna start, uh, asking various. Committees. To provide a presentation starting, uh, that last study session in April and May flip-flop. So you're either gonna do it April, May, June, July, et cetera. Okay. Regional and other committee board meetings, you think?
Kids have transit. Um. Really, the only one that I'm bringing to council is that we are, Kids Have Transit is approving the disposal of surplus twenty twenty-five vehicles. Um, Commissioner Rolfes suggested that we make the, uh, last year suggested that we make these. This information available to nonprofits so that they would have first choice before things went to auction. Um. Executive Director Klausen does not know how to reach out to any of these nonprofits. So I'm asking all of you, if you know anyone who might want an old access van, probably not a thirty-five-foot. Bus, but there, uh, there's a bunch of vehicles available. Um. Hang on, and if you would like, I will mail you, I will email you the table of. You know. A two thousand two Toyota Prius, a two thousand three Ford E three fifty, et cetera, et cetera.
They could share that with United Way and go out. Yeah.
Okay, uh, uh, United Way, that. That seems really sensible. Uh, okay, thank you. Uh, and that was pretty much it. They, I mean, we're, they're replacing a propane pump and dispenser, which has reached the end of its useful life. And that was the most interesting of the other items that were on the agenda. I did bring up, um, a difficulty with, uh, a constituent, Mr. Double Day, his letters in the Kids Have Transit packet. Uh, who was really concerned that he had to walk two miles to a bus stop. Whereas Kids Have Transit had assured us just a few months ago that no one in Bremerton had to walk more than three quarters of a mile. Um, and their solution was since he is an older person that he. And living in a transportation disadvantaged community. Uh, that he can apply for an access bus. It doesn't address the underlying difficulty of people who are not seniors or disabled. Uh. And there was no apparent appetite for taking that up. That's it.
Okay.
I got Tree Committee as well.
Go ahead.
Okay, so Tree Committee, uh, looked at three applications from. Do you have something?
No.
KRCC?
No.
I think he's making like a tree and stretching.
Oh, leave it alone.
Leave it alone. I know, I know.
You just want to branch out, don't you? Um. Okay, uh. So I was.
Leaving.
Yeah, okay. I was, I was really happy to be allowed to be the panelist on on this one, um, episode of the Tree Committee. They looked at three applications for Tree Committee and chose two, uh, so there's still at least one vacancy. Uh, staff still, uh, even if those people had been on board, staff still would have been at a two-to-one ratio. Cause quite a number of people come who aren't on the thing. Um. I was really, uh, I talked. You're surprised there. Okay, but each time I did, I asked and made sure that Ron Moore, head of operations, I asked him to make sure I wasn't overstepping. Um, and we looked at the Parks and Open Space Plan for Trees and the Street Tree Plan. There are a number of objections that I made to these. Uh, like a lot of the trees are columnar, so they aren't gonna provide shade. Uh, other trees are very slow growing like oaks. They will get to a thirty-five-foot spread, but that will take over thirty-five years. Um, which is, a street tree is, doesn't typically live that long. Uh, a third thing was, uh, our comprehensive plan, our chapter twenty-point-five-zero. And our Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan all. Reiterate our commitment to native trees and yet there was, I believe, one native tree. And many other trees were very specifically not well adapted for our climate. One is, uh, Missa Silvatica. Sorry, too much about trees?
Yeah.
Okay, so I made objections. They let me do that, uh. And I told them that the only role I saw for council was to. that the only role I saw for council was to keep encouraging them to report to us. And if anybody wants to meet me later, I've got a lot more about trees.
Okay.
Like it's, it's, it's revitalized. It has three members.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any other committees?
Uh, Trans Vol and K R C C met. I didn't attend. I was busy during A W C, but not, uh, looking at the agenda, they, uh, there, it's an off-year cycle from applications. So there's review and the application requirements to basically prepare for next year's cycle. How that shakes down.
Anything for the good of the order?
I had a really, uh, slightly well-attended, um, district meeting. I think we had nine people come and, uh, Director Barker and Gunner Fredrickson came, gave some presentation. Uh, I'm gonna say Tim wins the award. Uh, he brought more materials. I said that there was going to be a war, an award given for the best presentation between the two. Um, Gunner brought one really big, really great map that had the trail map and like other pictures, like really big. But he only brought one thing. And, uh, and, but it was, no, it was actually really good because now I know the difference between outflow and outfall. And that was my main goal of this district meeting. And also, um, I have a new group that I'll be contacting to start.
Sorry. Um, you're speaking and I'm looking.
I'm sorry. Anyway, um, I, I have a new group started of folks that are going to do some walking through the trails there. So that'll be fun to start up. Um, I'll do more information in my council report next week. Um, but again, thanks to staff for attending. Yeah.
Anything else for the good of the order? Reminder that next council meeting will be on Wednesday, March fifth, starting at five thirty PM on the first floor. Meeting chambers, Norm Dick's Governance Center. Publics invited to attend in person or remotely, but anyone wishing shouldn't be a Zoom, get their request through the city, but I call three six zero or seven three five three two three, at least twenty-four hours prior to the meeting. That, thank you, council. This was a good